Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, August 7th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. At 7:35, I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Quick Spencer.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park, absent. Heinquist.
Here.
Kennedy, absent. Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent, we have a forum, we are in session. Okay, we're gonna start this meeting with some recognition. And as we like to do here, we typically limit our recognition to state champions and first responders. And I'm happy to say we have four recognitions to go through this evening. So, to start with, I'm gonna ask for the folks from- Timothy Christian, you meet me over here at this podium. Okay, good evening. Tonight, we'd like to recognize the Timothy Christian Scholastic Bowl State Champions, right here. In a moment, I'm gonna ask Coach Carlton to introduce the group and say a couple of words. I believe this was- is this the team's first year in the state tournament?
Well, we've been in the tournament for twenty-one years. And we've won regionals, we've never won a sectional, so I can explain-
First advancement.
First time we made it to the actual finals in the state.
I'm gonna turn over to the guy who knows what this is all about. Coach, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you for asking us here tonight and recognizing this extraordinary accomplishment. I'm usually here in a different capacity, and it's like, I'm also happy, as a side note, 'cause I've been with Alderman Brom many times in his meetings with the flood mitigation, and my street is torn up at this very moment and putting in the flood mitigation. So, thank you very much, City Council, for making that happen, so I'm very happy with that. But, we're here to recognize an extraordinary accomplishment by this team. There's ten members, two are not here tonight, but eight of our members went through Timothy Christian High School, kindergarten through 12th grade. And so, it's really a testament to the preparation that these students have had. But, Scholastic Bowl is basically the Super Bowl of academic competitions in the state of Illinois. It's an IHSA competition, so it functions, or the structure of the state competition is very similar to any sporting competition. You have regional competitions. In our division, there's two divisions in Scholastic Bowl. There's the smaller schools, we're one of the smaller schools, at 360 students. But, there's 250 schools that start the competition every year. We've done it for 22 years, 21 years, I'm sorry. And we've won regionals before. You have to win like three matches at regionals. We play a season where we have all kinds of competitions during the season. We play about 50 matches a season. And then, March is the state competition. We won the regional this year, I think it's the seventh time we've won regionals. We went to sectionals. You have to win three matches at sectionals to go to state. We've never won a sectional tournament. We won a sectional tournament this year. And then, we advanced to state where there's eight teams from around the state. And you play a round robin pool of four. If you win that pool, then you play for the championship. And we indeed won our pool of four teams. And then, we went to the state championship. So, it's really a testament to, you know, the preparation. But, really, it's their hard work and also the preparation that they get in class, 'cause most of the preparation that these students get are from their teachers in class. We do practice once every week or two to get kind of organized and go over some strategies and so forth. But, just to give you a little idea what Scholastic Bowl is, it's like Jeopardy. And we have five kids on a team, okay? And they'll sit like, sort of like this, but five here and five there versus the other team. And there's a moderator at the front, kinda like the mayor, and he starts reading questions, or she starts reading questions. And you can buzz in at any time, unlike Jeopardy where you can only buzz in at the end of the question, you can buzz in at the beginning. Let me just give you a little bit of example, then I'll be done, if I can find my- and read this. But, this is how the questions are structured. They start off with harder clues, and the teams that are really good can buzz in after like about six words and know the answer. Other teams have to wait till the very end. And usually, it's pretty evident what the answer is to the question by the end. But, if your team doesn't, you know, has to wait till the end, you probably have lost your 10 points for that question because you took too long to buzz in. But, let me just give you an example of how this works, and then I'll be done. "Prior to his Red River expedition, Zebulon Pike was taken by James Wilkinson to find this river." Went dead. "Three decades later, its actual source was discovered by Henry Rowe Schoolcraft." Now, a good team would have already answered this question. "In 1682, this river basin, entire basin was claimed by Robert de La Salle for France. Louis Joliette and Jesuit Jacques Marquet mapped the northern part out for 10 points, what longest river in the United States?" And of course, that's the Mississippi River. But, just to give you a little example of how that works, that's the Scholastic Bowl questions. And there's questions in history, and English, and literature, and science, and math. Math will be a computational question, but these students excelled and they won a state championship. So, thank you for honoring us and congratulations to them. Her brother, Carl Miller. You'll see him someday, he's gonna be future President of the United States of America. He's a ward rep- you know, what, he's involved in politics, you'll see him around. Our principal, Brad Mitchell. Nick Alvarez. Willie May in a hat. Seth Bukama. Daniel Kuiper, who was All-State. Which means he was in the top 10 in our division of 250 schools. He was one of the top 10 students in the Scholastic Bowl for his performance during the year. And Nathaniel Yerschak. And we're missing Trevor Hogendorf and our captain, Jacob Hausman, who's unfortunately on vacation today. Thank you.
Hit me or watch your steps.
I know the owner wants to say congratulations personally, so we're gonna start here with Alderman Ballner. And I ask you to go around and shake their hand. Go ahead and start over there. One of the smart ones going for you there.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Great job.
Congratulations, great job. You're on it.
I'm on it. Congratulations, watch your step.
Thanks for coming out. Congratulations.
Congratulations, watch your step. Congratulations. Nicely done. Good job, Coach.
Oh, okay. Congratulations.
Carl, thanks. You guys are all big. Thanks for bringing them out. You guys are all huge.
Great job. Way to represent your school.
Congratulations, well done.
Good job, Coach.
Congratulations.
Watch your step.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. This is a better circumstance, watch your step, watch your step.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Officer Waldenmeyer and Chief Ruth and the folks from ELKS to join me up here at the podium. We have actually multiple award-winning Officer Waldenmeyer here. The folks from the Benevolent Order of ELKS, is that correct? Like he said. Are here to recognize, we had, there's an award that's the Kiki Carmonera Award. Did I say that properly? Kiki Carmonera Award, it's named after posthumously, I can never get that word right. Posthumously. Sorry. Posthumously named after DEA agent who literally gave his life in the war on drugs. And the folks at the ELKS honor him every year and award someone in the police officer field for their fight against the war on drugs. So, I will turn it over to the folks from ELKS, and I appreciate you coming.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name's Frank Burr. I'm one of the National Directors of the ELKS National Drug Awareness Program. I'm also the State Drug Awareness Chairman for Illinois. Each year, we ask every ELKS Lodge to nominate a law enforcement officer who has made a significant contribution in the field of drug prevention and the community. Elmhurst ELKS Lodge, 1531 nominated Officer Nicholas Wanameyer. The common theme in his letters of recommendation is that Officer Nicholas Wanameyer is dedicated to helping the youth and their families in the community. He provides guidance, education, seminars, a good year, and most of all, a good heart and soul. At this time, I'd like to award Officer Nicholas Wanameyer with the ELKS Drug, National Drug Awareness Special Achievement Award. The award reads, "The ELKS Drug Awareness Program Special Achievement Award. This certification is awarded to Nicholas Wanameyer in recognition of outstanding work done in the field of drug awareness education. Participation in these programs enhances the lives of Americans at all levels and helps shape the future of young Americans in a positive manner." Signed by the National Director, Ken Gady. Congratulations. Also, each year, the ELKS National Program asks every Lodge to nominate an officer for the Enrique Camerino Award. This award, as the mayor said, is to honor DEA agent Enrique Camerino, who gave his life in stopping drugs coming from Mexico into the United States. He was tortured and killed by the Mexican drug cartel. In his honor, is how Red Ribbon started. So, each year, we ask a Lodge to nominate an officer that makes the belief Enrique's model, that one person can make a difference. At this time, I'd like to ask Elmhurst to present their award.
My name is Earl Mica, I'm the President of the Lodge. And on behalf of the Elmhurst ELKS, I'd like to present you with our 2016-2017 Enrique Kiki Camerino Award for your outstanding dedication and commitment to promote drug awareness to the youth in the community.
The President, sorry. The President Council on Service and Civic Participation was established in 2003 to recognize valuable contributions volunteers make in their communities and encourage more people to serve their communities. The Council created a Presidential Volunteer Service Award Program as a way to thank and honor Americans who, by their demonstration, commitment, and example, inspires others to engage in volunteer services. In 2006, the ELKS National Drug Awareness Program became a certified, certifying organization for the President Volunteer Service Award Program, by which we are able to recommend individuals to receive this award. The ELKS National Volunteer, the ELKS National Drug Awareness Program recommends individuals who have over 4,000 lifetime volunteer hours, mostly in the area of drug awareness. At this time, I'd like to award Officer Nicholas Wanameyer the Presidential Volunteer Service Award for his involvement in drug awareness. The award reads, "Lifetime Achievement Award. With grateful recognition, the Corporation on National and Community Service and the Office of the President of the United States honors Nicholas Wanameyer with the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award for their lifelong commitment building a stronger nation through volunteer service." Signed by the President and the letter author. I knew I was gonna forget that, but Tony, make sure I remind me. He also receives a presidential pen honoring him with his service.
I don't know, they're too trusting.
Is that the little chatty baby?
We'll do one picture over here and then I'll send it back. Look at the crayons.
It's a little chatterbox.
Thank you for the service.
Congratulations, thank you for the service. Fine work, congratulations.
She was so cute.
Great work.
Only three.
They don't trust me.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations, watch your step.
Congratulations, watch your step. That's why I'm holding on to you.
Okay. The EMS team at Elmhurst Memorial, Edward Elmhurst Memorial, does a, holds an award called Run of the Month. And I'm gonna ask Andrea White. Is Jeff Hayes here too? There's Jeff. Andrea White and Jeff Hayes and Frank San Giacomo, if I got that right. Is Frank here? Where's Frank? Frank, come on up, man of the hour. As I said, the EMS folks at the hospital issue an award called Run of the Month, and I'm gonna allow Andrea White to tell us what is so special about this Run of the Month. Think you got it?
That's a little better, thank you. Hi there, everyone. Thanks, my name's Andrea White, I'm the EMS Coordinator at Elmhurst Hospital. Part of my position is I get to work as a staff nurse in the emergency department, but I also get to work with pre-hospital providers. At Elmhurst, we decided we wanted to recognize all the first responders that come to our hospital, and so, we developed the Run of the Month. Not just everybody gets recognized for this, there is a criteria that we have that they have to meet to be recognized. I'll just give you a couple examples. Excellent communication in the field resulting in a timely delivery of pertinent clinical information to the Elmhurst Hospital. Superior clinical assessment that results in accurate recognition of a clinical situation. These were two of the examples for the recognition that Elmhurst received for this situation. And with recognizing them, we also provide them usually with a lunch or breakfast, so we can celebrate the amazing job that they do. So, I'm gonna read you a letter that we read at the breakfast or lunch that was delivered from our CEO. "Elmhurst Hospital and Elmhurst Fire Station, take pride in providing expert teamwork and skill when dealing with challenging situations in our community. Please know that your partnership and excellent care and communication is something that we value and appreciate. On February 13th, 2017, paramedic Samantha George, Christopher Plasek, along with firefighters Lieutenant Steve Robo, Scott Wardzala, and Eric Davidson were dispatched to Elmhurst YMCA where a 58-year-old male was complaining of chest pain. In addition, Lieutenant Jeff Hayes, who was playing hockey with the patient, called 911 and assisted in the initial care before the first responders arrived. When the paramedics arrived, bystanders said that they were playing hockey and the patient started to feel pain. The bystanders applied the AED, but a shock was not given. The bystanders informed the paramedics that the patient has passed out for approximately 30 seconds. The crew found a strong carotid pulse, and the patient's skin was pale, cool, and diaphoretic. The patient was transferred into a stretcher and placed in the ambulance, where vitals were obtained along with a 12-lead EKG, which showed ST elevation in leads 2, 3, and AVF. This indicates to us that they're having a heart attack. We call it a STEMI. And at that time, when they call us, we call in the STEMI alert team." The paramedics continued on, they administered aspirin, started an IV, and the patient started complaining at that time of left arm weakness and felt like he could not take a deep breath. Patient was placed on oxygen, and he improved to 100%. The patient was transferred by ambulance to Elmhurst Hospital, and then we, again, like I said, showed our gratitude by giving them an award and certificate. I'm happy to say that Frank is here today to say a few words, if you'd like, about this situation. I can tell you that I was there when he came in. He looks so much better now than he did then. But, it was a quick response, the team was there, the paramedics gave us fantastic information to where we will be able to respond. And I'm happy to say that our door to catheter time was 48 minutes, which is extremely, extremely fast, if you can imagine everything that we have to do and everything that has to be in place for this to happen. The standard is 90 minutes, so we definitely surpassed that. And that was thanks to our first responders. Frank?
Hello, my name is Frank San Giacomo, and I am a heart attack survivor. It's really nice to say that. I'd like to start out tonight by thanking the City Council for allowing me to publicly thank the wonderful people that saved my life. I've sat on a few boards in my day, and I know how long these meetings can be. So, I'll try to be interesting. I don't know if that'll happen, but I'll try. I'm living proof that the system works. Although the 911 system can only work well if the people in the system are proficient in their job. So, there's some wonderful people here tonight. Not sure if everyone's here, but I would like to thank them. First, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Hayes. Jeff got the ball rolling. He made the 911 call, the ambulance call. And without him, I'm sure I wouldn't be standing here. Paramedics Chris Plasek and Samantha Georges, they were great. I remember when they got there, Samantha just kept saying, "Frank, stay with me, stay with me." Also Lieutenant Steve Robo, firefighter Eric Davidson, and firefighter Scott Wardzala. I really owe my life to you guys. My words can't express how I feel about the job you did on the night of February 13th. I'm so happy you trained and worked so hard on your skills. So, when the call came, you were ready. Because of your incredible work that night, I have a chance to walk my daughter down the aisle. Sorry. I also, I also might have a chance to hold a grandchild. So, that's pretty big for me. So, realistically, what happened on that night? It was a Monday night, and I was on my way to the YMCA. Something I've been doing about 15, 20 years ago, play hockey. Got on the ice, my chest hurt a little bit, but that wasn't anything new. My chest had been hurting for a couple of weeks, and I ignored the symptoms. Got off the ice at 11 o'clock, and another lucky thing that happened was I happened to be getting dressed next to Lieutenant Hayes. I sat on the bench, and I looked at Jeff, and I said, "Hey, Jeff, do you know how to work that defibrillator on the wall?" He looked at me and he said, "Frank, I'm a fireman, of course I know how to work it." I said, "Well, get ready." So, I took my gear off, and I grabbed my towel, and I was going to go take a shower. And I took about three or four steps, and the room started spinning. And I couldn't focus, so I sat back down. And I looked at Jeff again, and I said, "Really, I'm not kidding." And he said, a very smart idea at the time, "Hey, why don't I call an ambulance?" I didn't even respond, I just kinda sunk my head down. And he got in my face, he said, "Frank, let me call an ambulance." So, he did, and then I dropped, and everything else is kind of a blur, but I do remember waking up to "Do not shock." So, I rose my head up, I said, "Guys, don't shock me." Then I laid back down. That's when the paramedics arrived, and I'm not exactly sure what they did either, but I do remember Samantha kept saying, "Frank, stay with me, Frank, stay with me." And that was a common thing, and you know, I was looking, looking at her, and I was looking at her and trying to stay with her. And then, the ambulance ride was like something I don't remember either. But, I do remember when I got to the hospital, the doctor was waiting. And while the paramedics were pushing me along in the cart, the doctor was walking along my side. And I said, "Hey, Doc, am I having a heart attack?" And he said, "99% chance you are." And I looked at him, and he said something I will never forget. I said, "How am I gonna do?" And he said, "Well, people that get to the emergency room and can still talk when they're having a heart attack, they usually do pretty well." So, that was reassuring. Then I was in a room, and the doctor came back, I don't know where he went, and he says, "100% sure you're having a heart attack. Now, we have to call someone." So, I decided to call my lovely wife Gina and tell her, "Gina, I'm at Elmhurst Hospital, and I'm having a heart attack." I handed the doctor back the phone, and then he came back in the room, and I said, "So, what happens next?" He says, "Well, now we wait for the cardiologist to get here." I asked what he was going to do, and the doctor said, "He's gonna do whatever it takes to save your life." So, Dr. Barr came in, and he saved my life, and I'm here to talk about it. And I'm very happy that I'm able to talk about it. So, thanks for listening to my story. Thanks for Elmhurst, for the award. The paramedics and the fire department, they did a fantastic job. So, I am proof that the system works. Thanks again. Thanks again.
Chief, is there anyone here who was on that call that night? Anyone else here besides you folks? Right. Just one guy, I'm married. That means they're here, right? Well, let's bring them on up. Gina, is Gina engaged, or you just put pressure on?
I'm not engaged. I know, she just...
Do we have the folks from the American Heart Association? Oh, chief, we don't. We do?
I'll play the role.
Chief's going to play the role. We have a STEMI award for our fire department, yes?
Correct.
And can you explain what STEMI is?
Sure can.
Okay, good. Basically, it means heart attack, but it's a little more complicated than that. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. It'd probably be much better if the American Heart Association was here, but in their absence, we're expecting Representative, our area rep Art Miller, to make a presentation tonight. STEMI, it's a great segue from the previous recognition. STEMI acknowledges the American Heart Association's mission lifeline, and STEMI is a short component for, if any of you have ever had the pleasure of having an electrocardiogram, it's part of what is known as a complex, a PQRST complex in your heart, and ST of STEMI, E elevated, and MI is a myocardial infarction or a heart attack, which is what we were just referring to. The STEMI award recognizes excellence in the field for establishing and surpassing standards that the American Heart Association has established for delivery of service of the quarter million people that suffer an elevated ST segment heart attack every year and delivering them to an emergency room for proper treatment, much like we heard from Frank just a few minutes ago, and having, fortunately, a successful outcome. There's numerous classes that the American Heart Association establishes for meeting or exceeding these standards, a bronze, a silver, and a gold, and Elmhurst has been the recipient several years in a row of a gold standard, so we are now known as a gold plus two, which is one of very few cities in the state of Illinois to be recognized by the American Heart Association for such a high accomplishment by the emergency services personnel, many of which you see in the room right here, and it wouldn't be possible without the high quality and the delivery that they're able to provide the citizens of Elmhurst every single day. So with the presentations, I'd like to introduce our chief paramedic, Don Martenson, and he has the STEMI awards on behalf of the American Heart Association.
This is the Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Achievement Award for EMS agencies. It's awarded to the Elmhurst Fire Department Metro Paramedic Services. Basically, it's exactly what the chief said. It demonstrates that the continued success in the Mission of Life program, and they thank us for staying up to date with our training and what we do. It's a very big honor, and I appreciate them honoring us with this award.
Come on up, Mike. Hold the park. My next one, everybody. Come on up, guys. The two girls. Midwest. Check where you go. That everybody can be referenced. Okay, congratulations. Okay, we'll give folks a minute to file out if they need to. Wow, they're all taking me up on it. When it comes to heart health, I think Frank would agree, if you think there's something wrong, it's better to err on the side of caution and make the call. And that's what these folks are here to help with, but they can't help you if you don't make the call. So, good to see you, Frank. Good to see your whole family.
Thank you.
Where's my... You must know him. Onto agenda item three, receipt of written communications from the public at this time. Does anybody in the audience have any written communications they wish to submit to council? If so, please raise your hand. Any written communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. This is an opportunity during our meeting for anyone in the public to address the council on any issue they so choose. We ask that you direct your comments to the chair. Out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, and out of respect for others who may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. When you get to the microphone, the one just to the left of Chief Ruth there, we ask that you identify yourself for the record. We are recording, and address is optional. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anyone who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I have two, and I'll start with Bianca Parisi.
Hi, Bianca Parisi, Elmhurst resident. I just want to begin by saying that I love Elmhurst. I'm a graduate of York High School in Churchville. I convinced my husband to leave his family and friends in the south suburbs and purchase our first home here in Elmhurst in 2001, and I can't wait for my boys to be graduates of York. However, my family and our neighbors are frustrated. We are frustrated after being told in 2015 by an FAA spokesperson that we would be experiencing less air traffic off runway 4 right, 22 left, but we are now getting more air traffic. We are frustrated that although the ONCC was formed in 1996 and has 42 member communities, Elmhurst only became a member last year. We are frustrated to hear that we are outnumbered. If the east-west communities had taken that attitude, there would be no Fly Quiet program sending nighttime traffic over Elmhurst. We are frustrated that all along, and even now, we could be working with communities on both ends of the diagonal runway, like Lombard, Villa Park, and Oak Brook. We are frustrated, this past April, there was a Fly Quiet referendum on the Addison Township ballot that no one in Elmhurst seemed to know about. Once we did know about it, no city official could explain to me what this would mean for our community. I'm told this referendum may now be used to urge the Illinois General Assembly to influence the powers that be to make Fly Quiet permanent, and no one knows if this means permanent for Elmhurst or permanent through 2020 and beyond. We are frustrated that information is being forwarded by residents to the city to post on its website, social media pages, and email blasts, rather than the city taking the initiative in sharing information with residents. We are frustrated that not until Test Three are our leaders starting conversations about getting a seat at the ONCC table for District 205 and the Park District, like other communities have. While I realize school is not taking place in our school buildings at night, as previously pointed out, make no mistake, this is a school district issue. When our children are being woken up at 4:00 AM by these airplanes, they are going to school exhausted. This is absolutely a school district issue. We are frustrated to hear other residents in our community calling us dramatic or saying that we are exaggerating about nighttime noise instead of supporting us. This is not a north versus south issue, as we are hearing more and more residents in south Elmhurst complaining about their newfound noise. I urge all residents to go to the Chicago Department of Aviation website. You can track all flights in and out of both of our airports, and you can see what we are saying is true. We are frustrated to hear that the city is doing all it can on this issue. Those of us who are most directly impacted are asking you, our elected officials, to do more. Thank you.
I can never say her name right. Lonergan. Could never pronounce your name correctly. Sorry.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont. I was contacted by my alderman shortly after the July 24th Public Affairs and Safety Committee and asked why I thought it was imperative for residents to attend that meeting. As I shared with him, residents have numerous concerns and a lot of unanswered questions about the Fly Quiet program and future of runway rotations, and we're not finding a lot of information on how or when those final decisions will be made. As far as we know, we have the remainder of Test Three, or just 10 weeks, in which to voice our concerns. As we, the residents, share information on Fly Quiet with our neighbors, we're learning that there are still so many of us who don't know about the program. I'd ask how many of you have taken Test Three survey? Do you know that the last question on the survey asks, "Do you want Fly Quiet runway rotation plan that is in place for Test Three to occur from spring of 2018 through 2020?" That literally makes me sick. To know that any survey taker who answers yes to that question signifies that they want Elmhurst to receive nighttime air traffic every other week from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM for over a 31-month time span. It makes me sick to think that this survey question even plays into the decision-making process. Were there similar questions on Test One and Test Two surveys that asked if we were okay with sending air traffic over other communities for 31 months? Is this how decisions are being made that impact people's quality of life? Why are we not fighting this? Are we letting other communities dictate our future? If Test Three isn't the end of this, if we have more than 10 weeks for all tests, complaints, and concerns to come to a close, we'd appreciate knowing the next steps in this process. But if we only have 10 weeks in which to make our own noise and be heard by the decision-makers, it is imperative for all of us to work together and do everything we can to keep nighttime air traffic out of Elmhurst. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public forum for folks who signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who denied an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet yet still wants to address council? Please raise your hand so I can get a count. One, two, three, four. I see four in a row here. I'm going to start in the back and move forward so I can keep count. The gentleman in the blue shirt is raising his hand, Mr. Pagash after him, and then the four ladies who raised their hand in a row here.
Good evening. My name is Rob Kalkowski. I'm at 405 Highland, and I'm representing myself and my wife, as well as hundreds, if not thousands, in our community on the same subject that was just addressed. We purchased our home at 405 in 2011. We did much research on several areas in the Chicagoland area and the fact that the modernization plan was in place, okay, to minimize or actually eliminate the use of runway 4222L. You know, this was a major factor in our decision to move into Elmhurst. So after this east-west runway started being used, I'm actually surprised by the shock of the residents affected, and even more shocked at the press it has been receiving. So as these folks have already mentioned, somehow something's changed in a very short amount of time. Most people in here may know, if they've been abreast of the subject, the modernization plan started, I think, in 1996 or 1998, somewhere along there. So clearly, this is almost 20 years of research, development, activity, planning, et cetera, again, which has now been changed in a fairly short period of time. So if the plan is to forego the safety of the public by using the antiquated runway, you know, again, not to mention the taxpayer dollars that have been spent for the new runways, I would appreciate the folks here and all of us working together to do something to at least give us the 20-year heads-up so we can make decisions regarding the homes, you know, and where we live that the folks of the other communities were given. Thank you.
Mr. Pagash?
Apologize for not signing in. I came in a little late. Wasn't too long ago that this council heard the state of the city. There were some aldermen who were concerned about the total knock value of general obligation Of recently, that's all been put aside. City turned around, sold obligation bonds that were too expensive, still wound up with some additional general obligation bonds. Couple meetings ago, needed $8 million for water meters and fixing up the waste treatment We got over $8 million more in general obligation bonds. Last meeting, supposed to be 9.7 million, winds up to be 9.6 million. Even the clerk didn't know about it. So we got additional 9.6 million. Those general obligation bonds, the eight and the nine for putting in water meters and we work in a treatment plant. Finance once said, prior, EPA was going to loan, or was willing to loan $23 million to the city of Elmhurst at an exceptional rate, let alone for the last 18 million, we've gone to the private equity. Finance never really tells the public just how much they owe in general obligation bonds. And on this agenda, there's notification that there's going to be more coming down the road. They may all be for great purposes. And I may hear from the people that handled by for the city that we're three-star, 10-star, 15-star, I don't care if we're 100-stars. One of these days, those firms are going to add up what the school owes in general obligation bonds, and what the Park District does, and what this town owes. Because the residents are required to pay all general obligation bonds. That means water meters for commercial properties going for nothing. They're bought for nothing, because general obligation bonds are paid by the residents. That's you. So now they're going to add more to it. And the mayor was kind enough to inform that the state is going to start cutting funding for this city, and somehow that money's got to be made up. I can appreciate the need for what's being done. But when the burden falls entirely on the soldiers or the residents of this town, then this council better go out there and inform the people that you're paying a bill.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
And as far as I know with the reports I've read, salaries are not going up, gentlemen, but the burden of general obligations in this town seem to have no limit.
Okay, we had four folks right in a row, in about the third row. We'll start left to right. Raise your hand. Yep, that's you. I think you had your hand raised. Ms. Legere, I know you're all together. If you wanna pick the order, that's fine with me.
Hi, my name's Shelley Legere, 449 East Webster Avenue in Elmhurst, and I'm here kind of as a check-in on where we're at. A year ago, Governor Rauner signed a law in my daughter's name, the Annie Legere Law, which allowed first responders to be able to carry and administer epi auto-injectors during anaphylactic reactions. I was told that Elmhurst is on board, and I believe that, but it's been a whole year, and I've had people come up to me in Starbucks, down on the streets, at parks, thanking me for the law and how safe they feel now that the Elmhurst police carry epi auto-injectors. I had never said that. I kinda just thought it was going to happen, and I have to tell them that we still are not providing that epi auto-injectors. I understand that there's a loophole with a doctor's order and signing the prescription for the medication, but I guess my concern is that no one has really kept me abreast of the situation. I didn't know where we were at. I didn't know there was problems. Heard there was a meeting with the Attorney General, the Public Health Department, City of Elmhurst, and I knew nothing about it. I guess I just wanted to know, like, where we're at with our first responders, the police officers carrying epi. I know that the schools, the teachers, and the teachers' aides are trained to do this as well. A doctor has to sign that order. If there's an interim doctor that we could get to do so, I just thought I would throw it out there and just kinda get an update on what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Megan Cronin, and I'm going into 10th grade at York. And I've known Annie since second grade, and we were friends ever since I moved here. And on August 26, 2015, she passed away due to an unknown allergen, and she was allergy-free her entire life. And that's just a reminder that this can really happen to anyone. One thing could've saved her, and that was epinephrine, and also known as epi pens, which is an auto-injector of the epinephrine drug, which basically reverses the anaphylaxis, and it opens your airways, and it's very effective in stopping these allergic reactions. And importantly, it is even harmless when one is going, when one is not experiencing this allergic reaction. And on August 5, the Annie Legere Law was signed, and this allows first responders to carry epi pens, which are the auto-injectors with the epinephrine. And Elmhurst has the ability to carry epinephrine auto-injectors, but they don't, and they need a physician that can prescribe this. And I think this needs to be made one of the first priorities, or just way up there, because one in 13 children have food allergies in this country. And this is something that's growing. It's not going down. It's so important. And so my question is, why aren't we fighting harder for that large number of people? They can't choose this. Why aren't we fighting? How has this not been the number-one priority when we have seen a tragedy that's affected so many people in unexplainable ways? I wouldn't wish this on anyone. The pain of losing a best friend, Shelley losing her daughter, having to go to the cemetery on Annie's 14th birthday to see her, going your whole life without someone you truly love. As Mrs. Legere once said, "If there's one thing that can truly make her heart happy again, it's knowing that Annie's death can help save lives, that she made a difference, that she left her footprint." I know I'm just a kid, but I recognize the importance of this change, and I know we can do it. I know this 'cause Annie's watching down at this very moment, proud of everything we have accomplished, but waiting for more to happen. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gabrielle Zanoni, and I attend ICCP High School. I can take these three minutes and bore you with facts and it will not make an impact on you, so here is something that hopefully will. On August 26 of 2015, one of our own, Annie Legere, passed away at the age of 13 due to a severe allergic reaction. This death affected the whole town. On August 5 of 2016, HB 4462, also known as the Annie Legere Law, was put into place. HB 4462 allows for increased access and training on the use of epinephrine auto-injectors. On December 27 of 2016, the ALF donated $40,000 to DuPage County Sheriff's Office. So why is it a year later and our first responders still have not been equipped or trained to use an epi pen? There are children and parents that will stop Shelley Legere on the street, thanking her for the law pass, for getting the law passed, because now they feel safe, knowing that the first responders are carrying something that could potentially save their lives. But they aren't. How long are you going to wait before you take action? Equipping first responders with an epi pen is just a no-brainer, just like it was a no-brainer to equip and train first responders to use Narcan. One in every five of us suffer from an allergic reaction each year. Allergies are the sixth-leading chronic illness in the United States and cause more than $18 billion to manage and treat. In 2015, the DuPage County had 43 heroin deaths. If it had not been for Narcan, the number would have been much worse, according to the Chicago Tribune. HB 0001 has already saved so many lives, even though the law was only passed on September 9 of 2016. So how many of you have children of your own? I assume most of you do. So let me leave you with this. Imagine how amazing your life is with your children, and how amazing it is to watch them grow up, and now imagine your child being ripped out of your life. If your child is having a severe allergic reaction, and you're holding them in your arms as they grasp for air, don't you wish the first responders would be equipped with something that could save their lives? They're supposed to have them, so let's do something to get them. Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Hanson, 277 Forest. I was one of Annie Legere's best friends, and I was there the night of the incident, and I witnessed her go into anaphylactic shock. She was in my arms, and it's something that traumatizes anyone. But that led her to her devastating passing, as we all know, and one thing could've saved her life, and it should've been there on the scene, and it is an epi pen. Epi pens administer epinephrine to control allergic reactions. Epi pens save lives and are easy to use when needed. The incident that happened with Annie can easily happen to someone else in our community. It's time for all of our voices to be heard and taken into action. First responders in our community need to be equipped with epinephrine, and so the people in this community can stay alive and stay safe, so nothing like Annie's incident occurs in the future. It is essential that our town's safety is always put first, because we all know we can lose a loved one in just the blink of an eye. Annie's allergy was unknown, and there's a very high chance that there's others just like her with an unknown allergy that walk the streets every single day, and they don't even know it. It's time for team-up as a community and prioritize this problem and apply a solution. Our safety comes first, protect our people and the loved ones, and as a community, we need to fulfill all guidelines, despite obstacles, to make a safety highly proficient in our town. As a 15-year-old student at York High School who is deeply affected by the loss of my best friends, I'm ready to see change and I'm ready to help. I think it's about time that we get epi pens with our first responders. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address some public comment? We have two more. Start with Pete, you're gonna give up your spot for her? Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris White, and I'm amazed that our first responders do not have epi pens. My daughter grew up with allergies, and she was lucky enough to have an epi pen. Fortunately, she's never needed it. But I did ask a police officer here one day if he had an epi pen, and he said, "Yes, we have one in the squad car." Well, I just said, "Thank you," and I went back into Panera. Now I'm hearing that they don't have them. So I don't understand, and I'm ashamed that I would've gotten that word, and I probably will never know whether he was telling me the truth or not. I think it's time we provide the epi pens, and we do it tomorrow. Thank you.
You know how this works, Pete.
Absolutely. Pete DeCiani, 619 South Hillside Avenue, also your county board member from DuPage County, and the lead, actually, on the epi pen issue at the county. And I just wanted to make a couple clarifications. The legislation that was passed is a great piece of legislation. It will allow first responders to now carry epi. The challenge we have with the legislation is there's a whole harmless that was not put in this legislation, that was put in legislation for education and other capacities to carry epi. So we're trying to get through a cleanup bill in veto session. Senator Naibo and I are working diligently. We met with, actually, on July 24, on Monday, the 24th, we met with the Illinois Department of Public Health, DuPage County Public Health, Cook County Public Health, the Northeastern Regional Coordinators of Public Health, all the different groups that handle Narcan, and eventually, hopefully, will be handling epi. This whole harmless language needs to be added in order to give doctors at hospitals the willingness to issue prescriptions. So we are working on this. We're trying to find an interim solution. We are fortunate at the county to have our own doctor at the sheriff's office. So all of our deputies today currently have epi in the squad cars, along with the A.D.s and our Narcan. It's about 130 officers throughout the county protecting about a million people. However, we know that the first people to be on the scenes typically in municipalities that are incorporated are Elmhurst Police Officers. So it's, and I could tell you that at that meeting, our deputy chief from Elmhurst was there, and Elmhurst has got a seat at the table. They are very much on board with this. We're just trying to get the legislation corrected so that we have the ability to get a script written from either Elmhurst Hospital, possibly the County Health Department. Ideally, we'd like the prescription to be a statewide prescription, however, the State Board of Public Health is indicating that they would not necessarily want to do that at this time. So we're working through this. I feel the pain, 'cause I know the Legere family personally, and they're great people. They've worked so hard on this, and they want to see families protected. So we're doing what we can at the county and at the state level to correct this. I would expect a bill in veto session. We've, one thing, the willingness between all the state entities, from the Attorney General's Office, who actually was the lead educator on the education law that allowed schools to have epi at the schools, from the Illinois Department of Public Health, all the county entities throughout the state, they all seem willing to support the legislation that we're looking to push in veto session. So this bill passed with bipartisan support and with virtually unanimous votes in both chambers, and I would expect the same in veto session so that we can get our first responders equipped. So if I fail to communicate, I apologize. We're trying to do what we can behind the scenes here to deal with these legalities of the legislation, but we are working diligently to fix this. Senator Naibo and I promise to make this work. So until then, we will keep you posted. Fortunately, again, at the county level, we are fully deployed. Our officers are all trained, and we're here to back you guys up as well, but we really need to have, you know, all the municipalities fully engaged, and we're looking forward to that happening. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishes to address the council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. Onto announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So on Friday, August 18, the Elmhurst Children's Assistance Foundation is holding its 22nd Annual Golf Classic and Awards Dinner. This year's recipient of the Friend of the Children is Elmhurst-owned Joe Schaumberger. He's gonna be honored. The golf starts at 11:30 with a check-in. Shotgun start at 1 o'clock. This raises a lot of money. It's our prime fundraiser for ECAF, and a very important event for them. Information and registration can be found at ECAF, the number four kids.org, and hope to see you all there.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda at this time. Is there any item on the consent agenda? Any aldermen wishes to have pulled to provide additional comment or vote no? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to...
No. I need a motion.
Seeing that, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion by Alderman Hanquist. Second by Alderman New York. Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hart. Absent. Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy. Absent. Molliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Dwyer.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Onto Agenda Item 7, Committee Reports. We have a report out of VPZ. Clerk Spencer, it asks you to read the recommendation. Yeah?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the additional sales tax incentive for iMotorsports for an amount not to exceed $500,000 or 12 years, with $100,000 as an upfront incentive to assist with expanding the showroom, renovated parts, service upgrades, and the need for technical assistance and training for the hiring of additional employees. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for the city council approval. Signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, and Mark Molliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think my colleagues will recall, we discussed this at city council three weeks ago, and tonight, we had a committee meeting after I brought this back to committee at last meeting, because there were several issues that I thought were confusing. And what I did not want to have happen is for us to pass this forward and not have a clear understanding that the business owner could also sign on to. And there was a motion in play at that time that I thought might create that scenario, and then we would've passed something that the business would've rejected. So we pulled it back to committee. We discussed it tonight. I think, to recap, if you'll see on the dais, the summary letter was included, so you have it in front of you, as well as the report. And three main points I want to address. The first is that this agreement is set in conjunction, as we discussed last time, with a current sales agreement that is in place. This agreement is focused on the expansion of the business for the Indian motorcycles. There was, there were three main areas that I'll try and summarize that were, I guess, open questions at the last meeting and that did not get, I think, fully addressed. And the first is, the existing agreement that's in place, the existing sale tax incentive program that's in place, will continue to run. This would then, this agreement would run separately, but, and on its own merits, for 12 years. The investment of the $100,000 is to help with the build-out. We did make a adjustment. This is strictly for the build-out of the business, not equipment, training, or any other items. I think there were several questions on that. Second, the $100,000, as I mentioned last time, is guaranteed by a personal loan of the owner. So for whatever reason, the business did not survive the first few years that we would assume the sales tax would recoup the $100,000. The business owner would step up and reimburse us. And then finally, as, from a cash flow perspective, if you look at this investment, after that $100,000 is recouped to the city... $100,000 is recouped to the city, it is then a 50-50 split going forward until it reaches the $500,000 at 12-year mark. So it's a very good, I think, structure to the transaction in both protecting the business and protecting the city. It's an investment in a business that we discussed last time, is a success story here in Elmhurst. I don't think there was much angst, I'll say, in supporting the business. They're doing very well on the first agreement, were probably paid off early, and they're simply looking to expand with an excellent brand in the motorcycle marketplace with Indian. So I think that sets the table for us asking for your support to move this forward. As you'll see, again, the report was signed by all committee members in unanimous fashion, and we're asking to move this forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the committee meeting tonight where they did discuss the report, and Alderman's last chairman, Hanquist, did a great summary of what was discussed in that committee meeting. I do want to highlight one of the items that is a new addition to this report that's before us, and that is, well, at least on my second page, the second set of bullet items, and I think it's the third bullet item. The statement, "The incentive will be used in connection with the improvement of the real property and not utilized for the purchase of any personal property or equipment." I think this is a good addition. I believe it was Alderman Toledo who brought up this point. I think it's a great addition to this recommendation and this report. Here's my concern, and it goes back with what I said three weeks ago. My concern is, if this is the case, and they are not, they being iMotorsports, the applicant in this recommendation, is not able to use this sales tax incentive for equipment, and according to the paperwork provided by the city, that equipment dollar amount is $200,000. So from the million-dollar proposed build-out, you take away the $200,000, you're down the $800,000. That means the city of Elmhurst taxpayers are paying $500,000 out of $800,000 for this build-out or expansion. That's, I believe it was 62%, 63% of this expansion for this applicant. If it was the, what was written previously, $500,000 out of a million, simple math says that's 50%. So just by adding this item, the city of Elmhurst taxpayers are even paying more in proportion of this build-out for the applicant. Is Indian a great brand? Yes. Is it great to have Indian on board or proposed to be on board at iMotorsports? Yes. Will we see increased sales tax revenue? I would assume so if I had a crystal ball. All those things are good, and I'm in support of it. But like I said three weeks ago, this is too rich for my taste. Too rich, I believe, for the taxpayers to be paying 62%, 63% of the build-out for this applicant. Alderman Hanquist already mentioned this evening that they're doing so well that they're, they reached the first tax incentive, sales tax incentive, earlier than planned, which is great news. But according to our own sales tax incentive policy, one of the bullet items says if they cannot financially afford it. Well, we have conflicting information here. If they actually paid down the sale, or reached the sales tax instead of so much earlier, but that means they're doing well, which is great. Great for them, great for Elmhurst. But it goes against what our policy says, that a sales tax incentive shouldn't even be applicable in this case. And I know when I made my four recommend, or four motions to amend last time, or three out of the four I made, there was commentary in regards to, well, this is only a policy, and we can do as we wish, it's just a guideline, et cetera. And that is what a policy is. But when there's strong statements in regards to saying that it's a must meet this criteria, that's not a guideline anymore, and I said that three weeks ago. So I have concern over the dollar amount. I do thank the committee for adding the third bullet item out of the third set of bullet items, of adding, and belts and suspenders, essentially, of adding iMotorsports voluntarily ceasing Indian motorcycle operations at their location, and that would be considered part of, one of the criteria for fundamental breach. But if I look at the policy and my interpretation of the policy, to me, it doesn't even qualify. The facts, to me, interpret they're doing well, they don't need the funds. I've asked staff, I've asked others, I've asked iMotorsports, if you didn't get this, what would happen? And there wasn't a definitive yes or no, so that leads me to believe that they may or may not, but they may move forward. But it's not about, do we give them incentive or not? To me, it's not something or nothing. As I made the motion to amend last week, or three weeks ago, I think there's a middle ground. We're going past our policy, in regards to our policy stating 10 years, and we're going 12 years. We're going, what I would deem past, what we should be giving any business 62% of their build-out costs. And on top of that, even though it is creative, and I applaud the committee and staff, as well as the applicant, creative from a perspective of giving the $100,000 upfront, and it's called $100,000 incentive, upfront incentive, essentially, it's a $100,000 interest-free loan that they pay as they go. So is it a win to the city of Elmhurst? Sure. Could it be better, at least in my mind? I would say definitely. We're giving an interest-free loan, no matter if it's personally guaranteed or not, we're giving an interest-free loan upfront, and then $400,000, which totals 62% of their build-out. Too rich for my blood, so I applaud the changes that were made, and I like both of those changes, but it's still too rich for my blood from a term perspective and the dollar amount, so I cannot support it.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the committee for visiting this again. The, a question that I raised before the meeting last time was addressed, and I appreciate it, and it's that bullet point that talks about the incentive being used for improvement of the property. My question is, how does that relate to the sentence, second from the last sentence in the last paragraph that says, "Incentive to assist with expanding the showroom, need for technical assistance and training and hiring"? I just, can I, clarification from the city attorney that the bullet point clarifies that it is for the build-out?
Yes. I think the bullet point does, and I see what you're saying, Alderman, but I think that's kind of a summary statement of why the need for the dollars, but clearly, it'll, the RDA will include the bullet point with respect to the use, only for real estate.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in support of this project. I just want to ask a couple of points of clarification, and these have to do with the three bullet points that do with the fundamental breach. Starting with the, the first one's fine. Let me jump to the last one. If, and I don't think the report has to be amended, but maybe if we clarify that if they do something to breach their agreement, they being iMotorsport, that causes them to lose their franchise, would that be deemed to be an involuntary, or voluntarily cessation of business? In other words, can they just breach their agreement with iMotorsport, and they lose their franchise or dealership, and then do they have to pay us back or not, I guess, is the question?
Want to clarify that a little better? Alderman Levin.
Well, the last point says...
I see the last point. If they voluntarily stop selling motorcycles, Indian motorcycles...
Well, if they purposely breached their agreement with iMotors, with Indian, and they lose their franchise, they would essentially be out of their deal with us. I just want to, when we get to the resolution, to the ordinance stage, make it clear that that would be considered a voluntarily, having them voluntarily cease their operations, essentially.
Okay.
And then, the second issue is, I'm not sure I really understand the second bullet point. I can read it a few different ways. So if they, it says the designation of a location other than the dealership property is a point of sale, does that mean they stop selling here, they just designate another one, and they, the designation, I assume that means by iMotorsports, not by...
Somebody else.
Somebody else. So is it just designating another location anywhere within a certain amount of miles? I just think it needs to be tightened up a little bit.
Well, it's something we can tighten up, certainly, in the RDA. I'm going to ask the committee on that second. On the first point, I think if the guy backs out of his Indian agreement, he backs out of the, that's considered a voluntary ceasing of his Indian motorcycle operations. That's kind of what you said, isn't it?
That's what I want to have in the final ordinance.
I'm going to ask the committee, someone from the committee. I think we're all aware of possible situations where maybe somebody moves their operation to another location they might have. Is that what that bullet point's written about?
So we discussed this, if there is a clawback, I think that's the one thing that people are looking for. If they cease the business or move the business, if you remember, we talked last time, there is an existing business, that's why I started with my first comment, that is continuing to run. Yeah, that's the current business. So in this scenario, Indian Motor, they could lose the dealership, for whatever reason, to our discussion. That doesn't mean that the original business would go away. And as we also discussed, that sales tax associated with the original business would continue to come in, pay off the original agreement. So if, if they quote-unquote were in breach, I think we have to understand that Indian motorcycles, as we discussed, if they were to give up on Indian motorcycles, they're actually out a considerable amount of money in the investment of the building, number one. So it's a loss for them and incentive for them not to close down. But then also, if they were, for whatever reason, to close down, this agreement would end at that point. And the only money that the city is out is that $100,000, and as I mentioned, that there's a personal guarantee. So from a cash flow perspective, the city really does not lose any money in this transaction, even if they close Indian down. However, if they did pick up, and I think we're all concerned about that, if for whatever reason they picked up the business, both the original business and the Indian dealership, and moved it out of town, then the clawback would come into play. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, so the bullet point, too, that you just clarified, is they have Indian Motorcycle, and it's operating well, and they decide to move it across the street, which is Bensonville. This, that would be a breach of the agreement.
Correct. That's a claw, and a clawback would...
Okay.
...go into effect.
Clear?
I think it can be handled, clarified in the ordinance, the concern that I was expressing, but I thank the committee chair for the clarification.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hart.
Absent.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy. Absent.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Dwyer.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
And Bram.
No.
Eleven ayes, one nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.1, report out of DP and Z passes. Onto 7.2, another report out of DP and Z. Clerk Spencer had asked you to read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the applicant's request for a variation from the front yard setback requirement from the average on the block of 29 dux, 6'6" to 21 feet, for the purpose of constructing a covered, unenclosed front porch. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, and Mark Mulliner.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist. Second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a pretty straightforward case of adding a front porch, covered front porch, to a home. The committee unanimously supported it, and we're asking for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hart.
Absent.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Absent.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Dwyer.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.2, report out of DP and Z passes. Onto reports and recommendations. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things. I'm looking at my calendar. I think I'm correct, Alderman New York, that we have not had a city council meeting since before the bike race. Is that correct? Yes, that is correct. I'm sure Alderman New York will have more to add to this, but we had our 5th Annual Elmhurst Cycling Classic, the Criterion Race in Elmhurst on July 21st. And there's a whole host of people to thank, and I'm sure I will miss some of them, but it starts really with the residents of Elmhurst, all the folks that I'll call, quote, "are inconvenienced," as we shut down, basically, the center, all of Elmhurst College, for an entire day. All the folks involved in the city and police and fire, not only to make sure that the route itself is safe, but that everyone who attends is safe during the event. I certainly want to thank all the sponsors, Superior Ambulance, being the primary sponsor, I'm sure there's a designation for them, but our own Storino, Romello, and Durkin, to name a few. And then, I also want to thank Kevin York, Tim Radcliffe, there's one of the gentlemen I'm forgetting that I'm...
Rob Hocken.
Rob Hocken. They made this event. Every year, they improve on the year before. And this Elmhurst Cycling Classic was another fantastic event. The weather cooperated, for the most part. Shut down for about a half hour, right around 6 o'clock, and for the final race of the night, I think we had somewhere around 85 to 90 pros here from all over the country, and actually, all over the world. We got in about 65 minutes of a 90-minute race. Couple of accidents notwithstanding, but that's to be expected when you're going 40-some-odd miles an hour down Elm Park.
On rain.
And it's, and it's wet out. But just a fantastic event. I want to thank everyone involved, and looking forward to next year. And the folks who come in to visit, the bikers, can't talk enough about this. I think the two, three, three years ago, we moved it to a nighttime race, and every year, the parties get even bigger, and it's really exciting. Couple other things in response to my daughter, who, when August rolls around, she knows summer's over. Summer's not over. There's still plenty to do before school. The trolley runs until September 16th. J.C.'s Carnival's around the corner. We have the Elmhurst Beer Fest, just to name a few. Go on exploreelmhurst.com to get all of your information of everything that's still going to happen, that you can pack in before the end of the summer. Also, we have Senior Citizens Award. Nominations are going through August 11th. What day is it? The 7th. So you have four days to get in any nominations. You can go on the city website to download a document and submit that. Lastly, Tuesday of this week, I had the good fortune of attending the DuPage County Stormwater Committee, along with Howard Killian and Kent Johnson, and the city of Elmhurst was recognized by the county, not only for their adherence to all of the stormwater regulations imposed on us, but also for all of our forward-thinking in all of our stormwater mitigation. So it was nice to be recognized for the hard work, and I want to thank staff and the committee for all their hard work in that. And that's it for me. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. A few items, and the first one is going to piggyback a little bit off of what Pete DeCiani offered at the microphone regarding the EpiPen and where we are, just to bring the council up to speed. We had sent some information out previously, but in a little more detail. So we're part of the Region 8 EMS system, and as part of that, we have an EMS provider, which is Good Samaritan Hospital on Downers Grove. The way that the law is written, the annual Legear law, as I understand it, is that your EMS provider is the one that should sign off on the training that the Department of Health has put out for police officers to be able to carry EpiPens. police officers to be able to carry EpiPens. Our Region 8 provider has declined based on what Mr. DeCiani said, and that's the liability issues that are still out there. The way the law was written was a little different for schools, so it's a little bit of a different situation for them. Once we talked to Good Samaritan, and they said we couldn't do it, we also asked DuPage County Health Department, Elmhurst Hospital, and we even contacted somebody at Lurie's Children's Hospital, and all of them declined on, based on the same reason, and it's a liability issue. We are trying everything, as hard as we can, to get EpiPens into our police officers' squad cars, but we just, we've run up against this roadblock time and time again. So, I really appreciate all the work that Deputy Chief McLean has put in here, because he has gone to numerous meetings, as expressed at the microphone, to try to get that to happen here in Elmhurst. So, we're very cognizant of the need for it in the community, and we're doing everything that we can to try to do that. Lastly, I know that Mayor Morley has reached out to County Board Chairman Cronin to talk about what partnerships might be formed with the Health Department at DuPage County as well. So, we're waiting to hear back on that one. A couple other items that I have. We, we found, we heard recently, last week, that from Villa Park, because they have jurisdiction of St. Charles Road west of Route 83, that the bridge over Salt Creek is in poor condition. We knew that a couple of years ago, they lowered the weight limits after an inspection on that bridge. We found out last week that there, that the state is requiring them to lower the weight limit even more, and on top of that, they're going to close the northernmost westbound lane until the bridge can be repaired. So, that, that bridge is in some pretty bad shape, and as I said, it's the jurisdiction of Villa Park. So, that weight limit's being reduced to fifteen tons, which has necessitated the fire department to talk to Villa Park about some, some additional plans to help serve the PIC subdivision with ambulance and fire calls. In talking to the village manager in Villa Park, they have a portion of the funding for the replacement of the bridge, but it might take them some while to get the remainder of it. I'm still waiting to see the numbers on what that means, because if, if there's some way that we can help, whether it's to contact legislators or anything like that, we're gonna do everything we can to try to get that, that bridge repaired as quickly as possible. So, expect to see that lane closure in the next one to two weeks. They're gonna put some signs up in advance of that to warn motorists of what's coming. And mainly, that's gonna cause traffic delays in both directions, as we understand. So, it's unfortunate, but we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can, and I'll keep the council up to date as I can on that one.
Jim, let me, Mr. Grabowski, let me stop you there. Can you repeat again? It's northern westbound lane, so if you're traveling from Elmhurst to Villa Park, or traveling from Elmhurst to the PIC subdivision that is still Elmhurst, or Manny's Ale House, or whatever, that northern part of the bridge, so right in front of Backyard Alley Burger, whatever that is, Backyard Burger?
Back Alley Burger.
Back Alley Burger. That's being closed.
Correct.
What about, did you mention anything eastbound?
We, we don't think eastbound right now, but at this point, we could see that too. The bridge inspection wanted the, the lanes closed as soon as possible. So, I, if, if that's gonna happen, I'll update the council on that. As of right now, my understanding is just the one lane.
And in terms of maintenance of the bridge, and making sure the bridge actually operates the way it's supposed to, that is 100% Villa Park's responsibility.
Correct. It's my understanding that they do have some state dollars from the Emergency Bridge Repair Fund that are dedicated, but not enough to complete the project right now.
Okay.
Quick follow-up question.
Sure. Alderman, done.
Does that impact the, the trail that goes underneath that bridge, the Salt Creek-Greenway Trail?
That's a good question, Alderman. I don't know the answer to that right now. I'll find that out and report back.
But as, I, I think you mentioned, it does affect our firefighters. We can't take our big trucks across there, so we actually have to go down 83 to service parts of Elmhurst because of this bridge.
That's correct. And, and while we're doing that, Villa Park is committed to sending an engine or an ambulance to PIC subdivision to help with that.
Where's the ambulance get back?
Okay, sorry, I interrupted. You go ahead.
The last update, and it's, it's medical-related, and actually ties in well to the, kind of the theme tonight, and I'm gonna ask Chief Freeman to step to the microphone to, to give an update, is on Medic One. That is the unit that we deployed on June 3rd of 2017, and it has been running for approximately two months now with great success. And I know that the chief gave a little bit of this to the Public Affairs and Safety Committee last week, and we, or two weeks ago, excuse me, and we wanted to bring the council up to speed on the activity that's been happening with Medic One. Chief?
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Council. I know some of you are probably anticipating a, a report after four to six months, but we've been tracking the responses of Rescue One on literally a daily basis. And we compiled the first month, and we're blending the second month into it, literally as I speak. And I'm really pleased to tell you that Rescue One has absolutely exceeded our expectations and benchmarks that we established for it. If you recall, one of the implementation causes was to close a gap of about 3% of the calls in the city of Elmhurst, where we had substantive delays in patient contact by paramedics, due to the fact that we do not have paramedics on the fire apparatus. And Medic One and Medic Two, with the volume of calls that they were seeing, and the incidence and frequency, were, were not getting to the scene on that 3% of calls for sometimes between four minutes in town, and as much as eight minutes or more, when we needed to have mutual aid ambulances respond to assist us. We compiled some information, and we've got a goodly amount of, of good, hard data to make intelligent decisions, and a plethora of anecdotal, because of people that have been watching that response every day. And if you haven't seen a vehicle around the city, I'd be amazed, because it's, it's been very prominent up and down York. It, it literally moves back and forth between Station One and Station Two. It's home-based at Station One. It has a senior paramedic assigned to it. So, the first thing we did was developed a process matrix where we had a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary response of paramedics assigned to that vehicle, involving our most senior and most experienced paramedics. Chief Don Martenson, the chief of the paramedics, is one of the medics regularly assigned to that, that vehicle on a daily basis. That way, we have somebody that's an independent operator, that can work by themselves, that can establish patient contact independently, and many, many times has actually done that while it's moving up and down York, and putting fifty to sixty miles on a day going between stations. It's home-based at Station One, but if Medic Two goes out of Station Two, it travels down. It's dispatched by DuCom. It's part of the CAD that we showed you several months ago in anticipation of this process, and it goes down to Station Two and fills that station void until an ambulance comes up. Many times, just traveling the streets, just being out, it has taken in a call and been the first piece of apparatus to arrive on a scene of a medical emergency. So, we've seen some, some really remarkable changes in our times, in our, our response patterns by this movement back and forth. It went on some forty-eight specific calls for service during the month of June, well, June 3rd to June 30th. And I say specific, these were the calls that it was actually dispatched on. We, we gave it parameters so that these experienced medics could think on their feet, and they sure do. So, they could go out on calls if they thought there was a need. For example, multi-vehicle, multi-incidents up on the 290, they'll go. Their senior paramedics, they can assume what we call EMS command, where previously, that would take an ambulance out of service, and those medics would do triaging, patient assessment, and sorting, and so forth. Now, the senior paramedic will do it. We had a report of a overturned canoe on the St. Charles Bridge, and I hate to think of how many pounds we had sitting on that while we were looking for a canoe and possible victims. And the, the EMS coordinator from Rescue One became the, the EMS section, and therefore took a tremendous amount of responsibility off incident command. So, it does a lot of other activities as well. Forty-eight specific calls that it responded to, that it was due to go on, and it was expressly by CAD through DuCom supposed to go on. And as a result, we're already seeing a, a statistical predictability in not only the type of calls it's responding to, but in the, the hours. It follows the classic bell curve of, from about six o'clock in the morning till about five to five-thirty in the evening, when it sees the bulk of its calls. And then evening hours, things quiet down in the city across the board. But as a result of that, it's been able to handle the third and fourth ambulance calls. It's gone on some calls we didn't even expect that it would intervene on. For example, when we have an unfortunate DOA call, in the past, that would tie up an ambulance from Elmhurst for quite some time while it cleared through the police agency and the county medical examiner. Now, Rescue One maintains that contact, frees up the ambulance, and the ambulance is available for another call. Lot of times, we'll be called for a, a patient who wants to go to a further hospital facility. They're stable enough to do that, but we don't make that transport in one of the Elmhurst ambulances. Prior to this, an Elmhurst medic had to wait on the scene for a private company to show up, and then they would transport the patient. Sometimes, that was forty-five minutes to an hour where our ambulance was out of service, because they couldn't discontinue patient care. Rescue One, with one paramedic, now does that job. So, there's been a lot of adjacent benefits that we've seen to this, that we didn't even anticipate, that have come out just in the first month alone. The, the floating capability that this, that this vehicle has, and being able to immediately initiate patient care, and then hand off that patient to the two paramedics that arrive in Medic One or Medic Two, or mutual aid ambulance, which was greatly diminished in the first month of service, has been, has been significant. Two of the greatest objectives that were met are really noteworthy. There was a decrease in the amount of time that a fire company, absent paramedics, had to wait for a paramedic in the first month. There was a decrease by over two and a half minutes. So, in the past, while the fire apparatus with non-medics were waiting for a paramedic to show up, that time has been diminished, 2.6 minutes with the implementation of Rescue One. The time it had to wait for a mutual aid ambulance, for those rare occasions where we had to call Northlake, or Hillside, or Bensonville, or Berkeley, that time has diminished by three and a half minutes overall that they've had to wait. And again, sometimes it's because the Rescue One vehicle has arrived with a fire apparatus, because it's been in transit. Sometimes, it's been, Rescue One has arrived even ahead of the fire apparatus, because it's so mobile and able to maneuver around the city of Elmhurst much better than a, certainly much better than a piece of fire apparatus, and definitely better than a medic unit. So, we're beginning to merge the, the July data, so we can continue to make good decisions from the, from the metrics that we're using. All indications are a short period of time. I appreciate it. It's gonna take us a while to compile enough empirical data to be very predictive, but we've got a successful program. I wanna thank you for supporting this. It's already bearing fruit, and we're seeing some positive benefits for the, the citizens that we're protecting, and certainly with the theme, as the manager indicated tonight, of first responders and EMS, the benefactors of this are, are the residents of the city of Elmhurst.
Thanks, Chief. Sorry. Double thank you. Any questions for the chief while we got him? We're not gonna let you go so quick. Chief?
Alderman Levin. Chief, two, two questions. One is, what is the average response time for a call for an ambulance generally, whether it's Rescue One or one of the paramedics?
Total, total what we call reflex time, from the time the call is received until they're on the scene, is less than four minutes.
Right. And just because the topic was addressed this evening about the EpiPens, all the fire, all the paramedics, including Rescue One, are equipped with EpiPens? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We, we've had those onboard for quite some time. They carry two different dosages, what's known as one to 1,000, one to 10,000, but they've had those. And Rescue One is a mirror of an ambulance, with the exception of a stretcher. It has all the equipment, all the drugs that a medic unit would have. Yes.
Right. Because there, I've heard some comments in the hallway, and some of the comments tonight about the concern for our first responders, so that although we have that issue with liability, so that the police can't respond in four minutes or less, we will have trained medical personnel with EpiPens responding to a call.
That's correct. The, the medic units prior to the implementation of Rescue One had them. Rescue One has it. Like I say, it's a mirror of the medic unit without a stretcher in the back of it. But they, they have carried them for anaphylaxis, as well as for cardiac emergencies. Different dosages, but they've carried epinephrine for quite some time.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Bram, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Chief Freeman and, and staff for this ahead-of-schedule update. I have been very excited to see and hear about what the results are of Rescue One, or the rapid-response vehicle. You threw out a lot of facts, which I'm impressed that you have all those and, and able to have them roll off your tongue. I just wanted to follow up to see when we would be able to have some type of physical data presentation in hand, so we can review what was just stated here tonight, and then ask some more detailed questions later on.
City Manager Grabowski?
Chief and I were finalizing his report today, so we'll put that on Board Docs tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Plomsky?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Freeman. This is exciting, and I appreciate the update before a six-month marker. Just along the lines of Alderman Bram, is it possible to, in that report, to take a look at that, the 3%, well, the 97% that fall within the four minutes or less, and how that compares now? So, we knew that it was four minutes or less, typically before we had Rescue One. Just, you know, overall, how that's, those two have compared. That would be great to include. Thank you.
Any other questions? City Manager Grabowski, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that, and thanks for correcting me, because I said Medic One, and it's Rescue One. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also likewise, as the chief said, wanna thank the City Council for the support on this. It was something different and unique. I think we, in our analysis, proved that we could really benefit the residents, and so, early on, it's showing that it is, and we'll be anxious to follow its progress as we go along. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, City Manager Grabowski?
That's it for me.
Any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Yes, hi. I, I just wanted to speak about fly rotation number three, oh, here, fly quiet rotation number three, and maybe pose a question or two. Since this past, well, now, Sunday ago, a week and a day now, that this rotation has, has started, Elmhurst has been severely impacted. Definitely more so the north side than any other part of town, but as I believe one resident even said tonight, that there's been some concerns and questions all over town, not just limited to the northeast, northwest side of town. I guess my, my two questions, one would be a statement and a question. It seems to be the fly rotation three is not limited to the 10 to 5, or 10 to 7 hours, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM or 7:00 AM hours, since I've logged personally complaints up until 11, 12 o'clock the following day. So, are they expanding past the nighttime, what fly quiet is defined as, the nighttime hours, and utilizing that runway is the initial question. There's already been a good summary in regards to what Elmhurst has been doing. I know that there's no meeting for the ONCC this month in August. If there's any additional insight on what Elmhurst plans to do, not only at ONCC, but subsequently moving forward to try to get our voices heard on how this impacts the city of Elmhurst.
City Manager Grabowski?
As far as the runway use, anytime after 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning, they would go back to normal flight, airport operations. And depending on the weather, that would really dictate which runways they use. I know during regular, non-runway rotation plan hours, they do use the east-west configuration more than anything. But again, it's, it's very, very dependent on the weather as to when, if they're going to use 422. 422.
Just a, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I definitely understand the weather conditions definitely impacts the usage of the diagonal runways versus the east-west. In this case, I'm definitely a novice. I'm no expert in the arena, but it was, I don't, I should have took notes on what two days it was. They were back-to-back days, no clouds in the sky, not windy. From my experience of 20 years of living in the same house, not days that I have experienced, you know, the usage of those runways. So that's why I had some concerns that even in the daytime, there seems to be some type of change of use. One of the residents tonight posed a myriad of questions, which I don't have the answers for from all the research I've done as well, of, you know, what does this fly-rotation mean? There's been some notes saying that this is just interim until all the parallel east-west runways are in place, but there's also been some other conflicting information out there that this might become a permanent thing, and that's the biggest concern. If this was a three-month rotation, that's one thing, but it seems like there's a high percentage of a probability that this may become permanent. So if Elmhurst could, whomever the designees are, if it's Alderman Dunn at the ONCC meeting, or yourself, City Manager, or whomever, Mr. Mayor, get some clarification, I think, for some of the residents, and that may ease some concerns if it turns out beneficial that this is a short-term thing. But, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but it definitely seems like this is not a short-term. This could be permanent, and if that's permanent, it's going to hurt, in my personal opinion, and property values all over town.
Okay. Any other reports? Alderman York.
Thank you, Aaron. I'd just like to follow up on your comments about the Cycling Classic. The other, you did a great job of recognizing people, but we had 150 volunteers, and I'd like to thank City Treasurer Lewitz for volunteering. Alderman Wagner and Healy volunteered at our event. The mayor volunteered at our event, making our racers and all our guests feel welcome and want to come back. But what I'd like to do is maybe take five minutes at a future city council meeting and show people some of the videos, some of the amazing videos that were recorded off of GoPro cameras of the men's race and some of the cool crashes that happened and didn't happen.
I don't think they would think it's cool.
And the lightning in the background and everything. It was truly an amazing event. And also, the amount of coordination that occurred with the, especially the Mobile Incident Command Unit, and Don Novak with keeping us up to date on weather. And we actually aired on our side more cautiously than what they recommended a couple of times, just to make sure that we didn't put anybody in any apparel that they didn't need to be in. So it was an amazing event. The reason you didn't hear anything from me is I've been on vacation for two weeks trying to rest from it, and I know Tim has, and Rob has, and everybody in our crew has been, was exhausted after that day. We worked until about 1:00 at night, and everything cleaned up. So a lot of fun, though.
Well, thanks for all the hard work. Looking forward to next year. Don't be the jump on. Yeah, there're going to be jumbo trons next year, too? I think so. Ten of them. All right. Any other reports? Any other business? Alderman Toledo.
I just wanted to ask when the next veto session is for Illinois. Do you know, City Manager? It was referred to in public comment.
First week in November, I think? The veto session? I think it's first or second week in November, maybe November 9. It's not for a couple of months. First week, first week in November.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman New York. Second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.